You're good. I'm gonna tell you what to do. You're okay? Okay. Look at me. Yeah. It was worth it, though. It was worth it. There's a picture. You see the picture today?
Yeah. 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 Those guys all hung out there. It was crazy. It was a picture.
You doing a prayer, Nick? Sure. Okay, you ready? Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for November the 8th, 2007. Before we begin our actual agenda items, I just want to make an announcement. The city clerk, Gina Tally, is sick tonight. She actually lost her voice. So, we have one of our assistant city clerks, Mary Foley, that'll be actually doing the reading tonight. So, I'll ask the council for their indulgence and patience as we work our way through the agenda. And with that, I'm gonna ask that you please stand. And then, we're gonna ask Councilwoman Bassel to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) by the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm gonna ask that Councilman Cabo, please lead us in prayer.
(Inaudible) praying. For Heavenly Father, you have created each of us so that we realize the depth of love we need, that none of us even are, and that none of us wants to walk home. We have experienced that our hearts are restless until they rest in you and one another. Therefore, we thank you for all of our submission to this place, and pray that our being together will enhance each of our lives, along with the residents of this the great city of Danbury. And I pray to your special blessing from all who serve the common good of others, who realize how fortunate we are in the United States, and have so many more willing to serve, and continue to pray to the safety and amenity of our armed forces, and are continually grateful for those who have served throughout our history to protect and ensure our faith.
Thank you, Councilman. And will our clerk please call the roll?
This is McMahon. Present. Mr. Magusak.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Trombetta. Mr. Calendino.
Present.
Mr. Perkins.
Present.
Mr. Visconti.
Present.
Mr. Chinesey.
Present.
Mr. Esposito.
Present.
Mr. Sadi.
Present.
Mr. Cabo.
Present.
Ms. Bassel.
Present.
Mr. Rotello.
Here.
Ms. Diggs.
Here.
Ms. Teichol.
Present.
Mr. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Ms. Saraceno.
Mr. Seaberry.
Here.
Ms. Stanley.
Here.
Mr. - Ms. Tabersek.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The record please reflect that there are 18 present and three absent tonight. Mr. Trombetta is out of town on business. Mrs. Saraceno had a family event this evening. And Mrs. Tabersek is absent. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. And we ask that any members of the public, please, come forward at this time, address the council. Make sure that you're addressing the council about a specific item on the agenda, and you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury to address the council. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to the council this evening? This is Waller.
Hi, I'm Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. I came to address you on item number four. I'm very concerned about the AFSAP, the airport changing of the patterns of the air traffic. I sat in at the HEFCO meeting, and what I heard there absolutely scared me because of the sound, the noise that would be over this area. I know it's very important that we join it tonight or as quickly as possible because the lawsuit has been filed, and that they are looking for larger towns to be part of it because most government agencies listen to towns with better population than the smaller towns in the southern part of the state. So, that is part of why. But it also does go over our town tremendously. It will raise the decibel level for all of us, and I'm very concerned about that. And it will change our quality of life if we don't join this, if we don't fight it, and if we don't win this battle. So, I really would appreciate it if you go forward with this. I'm sorry, Mary Saraceno and Lynn Tabersek are not here. I wanted to say goodbye to them, but I wanted to say a special goodbye to Pauline. Thank you for being my friend all these years, and I appreciate it. Bye.
This is Waller. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, then, we'll continue on with our agenda as presented. Before we actually do the minutes, I just want to point out some interesting events that are happening this month, and ask for the council's participation, as well as any member of the public that's watching tonight on TV. Tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m., we are swearing in, assuming we have a positive vote tonight by the council. We'll be swearing in some new lieutenants to our fire department to help staff Engine Company 26. Evening, Weekcare is having its 30th gala. That's at the Amber Room from 7:00 to 11:00. November 10th is a particularly busy day, aside from the fact that it's my anniversary and I can't do any events then. Expect - honey, I'm just upsetting everybody up right now. I know you're watching. I got a surprise for her. But anyways, we have a breakfast in the morning. The DFW has their past commanders and past presidents' annual dinner. St. Anthony's is celebrating its 75th anniversary. We congratulate them on a wonderful milestone and achievement at the Amber Room. The Sons of Portugal are celebrating their 30th anniversary of their folklor dance group. And Christian Community Outreach Ministries is having its 12th annual concert at the New Life Community Church in New Fairfield. On the 11th is our Veterans Day ceremonies. Again, I encourage the council to be there at the War Memorial on the 11th hour, 11th day, to recognize our veterans. 12th City Hall is closed, just for information. In addition to that, we also have a number of other events that you see on the agenda. Of those in particular, on November 18th, there'll be a going-away send-off for the Amber Reservers from the Foreign 11 Civil Affairs Battalion. You're welcome to attend that. Terrywell Park Meeting is also happening on November the 20th. And we're doing Light the Lights on November the 27th. That's the annual tree lighting event at the Danbury Library Plaza at 5:30. So, those are pretty much the events that we have listed, but you can certainly contact Wendy Keon to consult in my office if she has any questions or concerns. Mrs. Bassel?
And I would be remiss if I didn't say happy birthday on 11/11 to Mary Agnew, who is my teacher at Main Street School. She's gonna be 105 on Sunday, and I just want to wish her a very happy birthday.
And while we're on the subject of birthdays, we also have some other ones. Paul Rotello's birthday was on November 5th, and he turned 29. Congratulations, Paul. Happy birthday. Councilwoman Jane Diggs will be celebrating her 21st birthday on November the 16th. Congratulations. And Bob and Marie Riley have their wedding anniversary on the 19th. Bob, God bless and congratulations. Second anniversary. And again, feel free to contact Wendy in my office for other events. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. November 10th, would you like to mention that that's a very special day, that's in the United States' leading for birthdays. That's a very special day.
All of our Marines, hurrah. Thank you. Absolutely. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. Mr. President of the Minutes, please.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
It was made to waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies. It's been seconded by Councilman Perkins. Is there any deletions, changes, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar for November 8th, 2007. 15, we see the communication and approve the sale of City of Danbury surplus vehicles and equipment as stated therein. 16, we see the communication and approve the transfer of $20,000 to the Fire Department's Special Services Fund. 17, we see the communication and approve the transfer of $687,500 from the fund balance to the Public Safety Property Line, item 9100.7000.368. 19, we see the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize the Danbury Band-Aids to apply for and accept OPM funding for the purchase of new band instruments. 20, we see the communication and approve the resolution to authorize the Police Department of the City of Danbury to share its contribution responsibilities in the amount of $25,000 of the DUI Enforcement Program grant. 21, we see the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the tax collector of the City of Danbury to reassign the real estate liens to American Tax Funding LLC. 22, we see the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut DOT Local Bridge Program for the various bridge repairs as listed therein. 24, we see the report and take no action at this time. 25, we see the report and take no action at this time. 26, we see the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. 27, we see the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Mr. President?
Recommendation that we remove item number 24 from the consent calendar.
It was made to remove item 24 from the consent calendar, as ordered. Any other comments regarding the consent calendar as presented? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor of adopting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Madam Clerk? Item one, please.
Personnel Director. Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of Virginia Alasko Warner, 9 Burnley Drive, Danbury, Connecticut, to serve the City of Danbury as Director of Personnel. Ginny has provided many valuable contributions in her service to the City of Danbury and is currently in the position of Acting Personnel Director. Ms. Alasko Warner is a graduate of Long Island University with a Master of Arts degree in psychology and a Bachelor of Arts degree in industrial organizational psychology from LaSalle University. She's a dedicated human resources professional with extensive generalistic experience in the field. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Markie Vatten, Mayor.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Calendino?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Virginia Alasko Warner to Director of Personnel for the City of Danbury.
It was made and seconded by Mr. Sheenisi. Any discussion about Ginny? Any abuse we want to mete out? Seeing none, then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Ginny, you've been serving as Acting Personnel Director since Dina left in April. You've done an outstanding job. You're an incredibly valuable member of this team, and I want to thank you for your work in that capacity, and I'm very proud and honored to see you get this appointment because you certainly have earned it. So, God bless you. Keep up the great work, and I know this council enjoys working as well. So, congratulations. Tried to make her blush. I think I did. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of Caitlin E. Redano, 23 Taylor Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut, to serve the City of Danbury as Director of Welfare. Caitlin is an experienced, dedicated professional with a background in program management, community relations, casework, and grant writing. Ms. Redano earned her Master of Social Work degree from the University of Connecticut and a Bachelor of Science degree in social work from the College of St. Rose in Albany, New York. She currently holds the position of Communications Unit Leader and Supported Educational Coordinator at Laurel House in Stamford, Connecticut. Ms. Redano is also the Director of the Nursing Career Development Project with the Center for Professional Development at the University of Hartford. In addition to Caitlin's professional accomplishments, she has received numerous academic awards and conducted extensive research within her field of study. In her previous positions, she has managed advocacy programs and provided casework to a diverse group of populations. Ms. Redano's experience and dedication to serving the community will be a tremendous asset to the City of Danbury. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Markie Vatten, Mayor.
Clerk, it's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Caitlin Redano for the position of Director of Welfare for the City of Danbury.
It was made, seconded by Mr. Sheenisi. Pretty quick on the draw-up tonight, Mr. Sheenisi. Any discussion about the appointment of Caitlin Redano? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Caitlin, I want to congratulate you on your appointment tonight. Your appointment came after an extensive and exhaustive search. You bring a myriad of different talents and skills to the position of Director of Welfare. You know, you've got tremendous shoes to fill with Amy and Debbie McKenzie before that, but I know you can do it. I was thoroughly impressed with your interviewing and your background and all your great ideas for our shelter and for our department. And so, we look forward to working together as we implement our 10-year plan, 10 homelessness, and also as we work on our shelter and our strategies to enhance the services that we provide there. So, congratulations to you. God bless you and good luck in your position. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of firefighter Charles E. Payne, 39 Tunnel Road, Newtown, Connecticut, to the position of Lieutenant of the Danbury Fire Department. Firefighter Payne joined the Danbury Fire Department in July 1987, following his service as a volunteer firefighter. Charles is a Connecticut Certified Fire Service Instructor and is working toward a degree in fire science.
Pleasure, counsel. Councilman Curran?
I'd like to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of firefighter Charlie Payne to the position of Fire Lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department. Charlie, it's been a long time coming, and I'm sure you're gonna make a great lieutenant.
It was made and seconded by Councilwoman Bassel. Is there any discussion about Mr. Payne's appointment? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Charlie, congratulations. You've earned this appointment. I know I speak for the chief that we're so proud of what you've done, and we're proud of our fire department and the men and women that you see behind you because they are fantastic, best department in the state, if not the United States of America. So, congratulations. Madam Clerk?
I am also pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of firefighter Joseph K. Hollis, 33 Ridge Road, Danbury, to the position of Lieutenant of the Danbury Fire Department. Joe is a Danbury native and joined the Danbury Fire Department in October 1999, following his service with the Greenwich and Stratford Fire Department. Joseph earned a BS Justice and Law Administration from WCSU, is a Connecticut Certified Fire Instructor, Fire Officer One, and an Incident Safety Officer.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Curran?
I'd like to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of firefighter Joe Hollis to the position of Lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department. And Joe, your dad would be real proud of you.
It was made and seconded by Councilwoman Bassel. Is there any discussion about Mr. Hollis's appointment to Lieutenant? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Joe, I just want to say on behalf of the council, we're very proud of you. I remember you as my student. I lost a few hairs over you, but you made it, and this is an incredible legacy to the contributions your family's made to the safety of this city, particularly your father. I know that he's so proud of you right now as he looks down upon us and watches you accept this appointment. So, God bless you, and thank you for everything you've done. Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
I am also pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of firefighter Jamie B. Schiller, 31 Nadel Avenue, Danbury, to the position of Lieutenant of the Danbury Fire Department. Jamie joined the Danbury Fire Department in October 1999, is a Connecticut Fire Service Instructor, Fire Officer One, and EMT, and was awarded City of Danbury Employee of the Month in April 2002.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of firefighter Jamie Schiller to the position of Lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department.
It was made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Is there any discussion about Mr. Schiller's appointment to Lieutenant? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Jamie, congratulations to you. Another one of our firefighters who has earned this appointment, did an excellent job in the interview. He's an outstanding hockey player, so he's got that going for him as well. But more importantly, he'll be a leader for a lot of the young firefighters that we're bringing into the department and to teach them what's been passed on to him, the legacy of the Danbury Fire Department, and what's required to do the job. So, Jamie, congratulations, and God bless you. Good luck. Madam Clerk?
I am also pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of firefighter Daniel W. Gregory, 94-8 Riverside Road, Sandy Hook, Connecticut, to the position of Lieutenant of the Danbury Fire Department. Daniel joined the Danbury Fire Department in October 1991, earned a BS Management from Fairfield University, and is a Fire Officer One.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. And once again, I'd like to move to receive this communication and confirm the appointment of firefighter Dan Gregory to the position of Lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department.
It was made and seconded by Councilman Cabo. Is there any discussion about Mr. Gregory's appointment? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion that carries unanimously. Dan, congratulations. I want to congratulate you and wish you the best as you begin the next step in your career ladder with the Danbury Fire Department. You've done an outstanding job, and we certainly look forward to you working with a lot of our new firefighters to help train them and to work with them and to help them become the firefighters that they should be, working for this great department. So, congratulations. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Markie Vatten, Mayor. Dear common council members, on September 5th, 2007, the Federal Aviation Administration issued a final decision in order for its plan to redesign airspace in Greater New York in their view to enhance efficiency for the air traffic control system. However, impacts will include increased jet noise as incoming flights to LaGuardia are rerouted to the Hudson Valley in New York, State to Fairfield and Litchfield Counties in Connecticut. The City of Danbury may experience changes to existing commercial flight traffic into New York airports and some changes to Danbury Airport flight operations. The City of Danbury is being asked to join a consortium of Fairfield and Litchfield County communities to seek a reversal of the FAA's decision. A group of municipalities formerly known as the Alliance for Sensible Airspace Planning, AFSAP, currently includes Redding, Ridgefield, Darien, Greenwich, New Canaan, Norwalk, Stamford, Weston, Wilton, Westport, and Poundridge, New York. According to AFSAP's technical consultants, the greatest increase in noise in our area is forecast to occur along a generally north-south band stretching from Bridge Ward in Milford, Brookfield, and Danbury through Redding and Ridgefield to New Canaan and Stamford. Yet, the new flight pattern over Connecticut will enable air traffic controllers to legally and quickly move the proposed north-south flight path 15 miles east to west, so all of Fairfield County and southern Litchfield Counties will be impacted. With AFSAP's effort, many leaders believe the unfavorable FAA decision can be reversed. The Coalition is fighting to win and has engaged legal and political skills to participate effectively. The law firm McDermott, Will and Emery have been engaged, and other specialized services groups are also being contracted. AFSAP currently budgeted $920,000 for this effort, a cost that may increase should we experience an extended Circuit appellate court appeal. Danbury's share could be $45,000 to $125,000, depending on the final membership of the Coalition, the equitable cost-sharing agreement that we approved. Each additional community that joins lowers the percentage share for all other members. Rockland County in New York, Bergen County in New Jersey, and other groups have filed separate appeals. Participation in the Coalition seems an appropriate measured response to the FAA's plans. I propose Danbury join the Coalition to help preserve the quality of life we enjoy. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Markie Vatten, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, counsel. Mr. Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Danbury enter into an agreement with the group known as the AFSAP with a dollar limit not to exceed $125,000 as Danbury's share, and along with the pending certification from the Director of Finance.
Second.
It was made and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Is there any questions or discussions about the decision? Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Either you can answer this or Director of Finance, can you just tell me where this money specifically will come from?
We'd probably take it out of contingency at this point, but I will tell the council that it may require, depending on the kind of winter we have, I may have to backfill contingency out of fund balance in the early spring. It'll just depend on, we got one contract still outstanding, which is DMEA, so it'll depend on that. We're homing in on a conclusion to that contract. But also, you know, depending on the winter, any other contingencies, depending on how much we need, I may come back to you in the spring and want to replenish the contingency or just draw right from fund balance later on in the spring. So, right now, we'll take it out of contingency.
Could I just have a follow-up, please? When will it start to, when will we have to start to put our share in?
It'll depend, again, on what the final numbers are of the Coalition. We know the state's already enjoying this action, and we also feel strongly that the communities need to speak. And once we understand how many people are gonna be in the Coalition, how many communities, we'll then be able to develop a funding mechanism, which will probably be similar to the Connecticut Coalition for Justice and Education funding. We base it on population. Larger the population, the more you pay, the smaller the population, the less you pay. And also, impact, depending on the flight path, how much will be impacted. Danbury stands to be very much impacted if this plan were to go through because our local air traffic will be driven lower, which will obviously provide a disruption to quality of life. So, for us, it seems like a logical step for us, but, and we've, the motion was to cap the award, meaning that anything exceeding $125, I'd come back to the council. I think we need to discuss that a little bit more if you want to continue our participation. Mr. Curran?
Mayor, have you had contact with the other local towns, and are they gonna jump on board, or are they gonna let us spend our money?
Well, it seems that we've got pretty good participation, particularly down county. I think as you get farther north and you migrate away from the proposed flight pattern, it's not as much participation, but definitely lower Fairfield County is very much interested involved. In fact, the governor was with the Attorney General, I think, in Trumbull or Monroe, Mike, New Canaan, and they're all very much interested in joining the Coalition, so. Further discussion? Mr. Visconti? I'll get back to Mr. Rotello. Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, through the chair, to Mr. Estefan? Paul, if you could just give us a quick overview of the exact impact of what this would do to our airport here, and in the area of noise and the flights. would do to our airport here, and in the area of noise and the flights taking off and landing?
The, as the mayor had stated, it'll compress the airspace, meaning that in order for us to depart, we have to make sure that the aircraft above us have passed through the area before we can start our climbs to higher altitude. Because if they bring the ceiling down from, down to a bottom minimum of 6,000 feet, then we're going to have to wait for those airliners to pass through the area to get our jets and turboprops up into the air and up climbing. So we have to cross the street. It's much like going through an intersection. You've got to wait your turn, and we're going to have to wait our turn. And thus, all those smaller airplanes will be down lower when they really should be up around 3,000 and 4,000 feet.
Mr. Estefan, could you give the council a sense of, right now, if you look up at the sky and see an airliner, how high up are they right now, so they understand the proportion?
About 6,000 feet.
Right now, as we speak?
No, just about a mile, about a mile, little, a little over a mile, 1.1 up in the air. So if you were to stand that mile straight up, it's 6,000 feet. Then subtract your elevation. So they could be down to 5,500 feet. So if you're at the airport, use 500 as a round figure, 500 feet above Long Island Sound, they're going to be at 5,500. And all of a sudden, you're going to go, whoa, that is big. And you're going to see more of them. And you're starting to see some of them now. I'm getting reports from New Fairfield, I'm getting reports across the border in Brewster, wondering why they're so low.
And Mr. McLaughlin, could you give a sense of the noise proportion? There was a decibel number they were talking about. Do you remember that figure at HEPCO?
Reports provided by SWRPA's technical assistance talked about increases in decibel level in communities from upper Litchfield County all the way down to Long Island Sound. There are parts of Danbury that have red areas, which are highest degrees of increase in decibel level. Communities that are even impacted as much or more are southern New Milford, northern Brookfield, and Bridgewater, of all places, are going to experience a great deal of increase in sound. And then all the way down south from Ridgefield Sound.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rotella?
Thanks, Your Honor. This is going to affect not only the health and welfare of the citizens of Danbury and the surrounding communities, but also probably the property values. It's almost as if the FAA has decided to build a highway, not in one part of town, but in every part of town. Or a DEP has decided to allow a rock crushing, rock crushing firm on the edge of town to put a rock crusher in your backyard. But these jets are loud. And it's a cumulative effect. Every 10 decibels in an increase in volume is actually a doubling of the perceived volume. So if the jets are now at 65 dB and they go up to 75 dB, that sounds like, well, maybe it's, you know, 6% or 7%. It's actually 100%. There'll be an increase in the amount of flights. And as Director Estefan has told us, there will be probably a compressing of the local airspace, which means that the Danbury planes will probably be a little bit lower, too. So for people that hear them now, those local Danbury planes will be louder, the jets will be increased, they'll be louder. And, you know, this is one of those things, 100,000, I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, it is a lot of money, $125,000. But when you divide it up by the population in Danbury, we're talking about something on the order of a dollar or two per person to keep these jets out of our hair. I think it's a good investment, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Any further discussion about this? Mr. Shinise?
Thank you, Your Honor. My question we get through to Corporation Council, where exactly is this in terms of courts? Is it already at the appellate level, or is it?
I don't know enough specifics about it, Mr. Shinise, to tell you exactly where it is. What I can tell you, it's at the early stages. I don't know if there's been any filings. I haven't got any copies of any filings. So it's probably at the, at the planning plus stage.
I, to continue a little bit, I know I was pretty much active in following FERC as they went through their SNP plan with Canwood Lake, and I, a big believer of that was public input, public comments. Now, just wondering if this could follow that same suit, have like a public hearing where the people can voice their opinions as well to give their inputs. Is there any mention of having some types of public hearings locally here, at least here in Danbury?
Well, since the Federal Aviation Administration is a federal agency and entity, it likely follows similar procedures, including the availability of public hearings or public meetings and other procedures like any other federal agency, including FERC.
And if that's going to be the case, if one does come up, I think at least through this council, we should at least let the public know about a public hearing. So at least get, at least be aware of it.
I'm sure the council will advise all of the participants appropriately.
Further, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. To Chair, please.
Chair. Mr. Pinter?
Sort of playing a devil's advocate position, has Danbury been approached by the other municipalities regarding this issue, or has Danbury, due to the decision, approached the other cities that are at this time involved with this situation?
I'm not really sure about the answer to that question. Maybe Mr. McLaughlin can provide a better answer. As I understand it, this has been circulating for a little while, and there were some discussions between or among towns, and Danbury became part of that discussion. But the particulars of that, I honestly don't know.
We had a briefing at HEPCO, Mr. Riley, that they approached us about joining the lower part of Fairfield County.
In a follow-up, if I may, thank you, sir. And if by chance, Danbury, the City of Danbury would elect not to take part with the other municipalities regarding this issue, would they go ahead with their, would they go ahead with their plan as it is to fight this issue without us meeting? It's sort of, I'm sort of taking a devil's advocate position on this.
Yes, they would.
They would?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about this issue? Seeing none, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just with regard to the $125,000 cap, so people are clear, that would mean that if we get near it, we most likely get a report from Corporation Council, and then we could reauthorize additional funds as needed. Something like this could take, unfortunately, a very long time. And as I understand it, it's before the Regulatory Board, not even before District or Appeals Court yet, so we're just in the initial stages.
And our attention would be that, once we get beyond the $125 cap, we want to come back in, kind of give you an update where we are, what steps we think need to be taken, if any. And then I think we ought to have a public discussion about whether or not to continue investing in this, or hopefully things will work out and we'll be able to get that entire flight plan changed.
If you're welcome, Sadi. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor of joining the Coalition, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Dear common council members, Behringer Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals is a tremendous corporate partner in our community and continues their generosity with the attached donation to the Danbury Police Department and the Danbury Fire Department. Please accept this donation of $911 and divide the funds per their request. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Cecily Marky Battin, Mayor.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Negerschaff?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation of $911 and divide the funds per their request, and then send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Negerschaff, seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Dear Mayor Battin and members of the common council, the Fire Department has received a donation from Behringer Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals, Inc. This check in the amount of $25,000 is for the construction of an emergency vehicle access gate at Jenny Drive and Briar Ridge Road on the west side of Danbury. I would ask that this generous donation be accepted at the November meeting of the common council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Respectfully yours, Jeffrey Harold, Fire Chief.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure, Council. Councilman McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the generous donation of $25,000 from Behringer Ingelheim to the Danbury Fire Department and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Negerschaff, most made by Councilwoman McMahon, seconded by Councilman Negerschaff. Is there any discussion about the donation? Mr. Shinise?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my question would be through either Chief Harold or Public Works regarding the actual gate itself. Can you give us, give me an overview of the gate? And also, I have a question, Chief Harold, as well. Sorry, Doro.
Sure. I spoke to you very early on about this project, because I know you had some concerns about it. The gate is going to be a fully automated gate. Originally, we're looking at doing a, what was going to be a man gate. And we're able to actually secure enough of a contribution from not only this company, but the WCI community. And we are going for a fully automated gate, which is going to be actuated by a siren activation device. So as the sirens approach the gate, it'll automatically open it, and then it will close. So that's what we're going for. We hope to start the project in about maybe three weeks. And we hope to have it done before the paving season comes to an end.
I mean, when you said by a siren, can that siren be duplicated by a horn, or?
These are very sophisticated. I have never installed one of these, but the vendor has assured us that it is, it's been used in other communities, and they're, they're actually very sophisticated devices that are really toned into the sirens on the vehicles, police, any emergency vehicle. And they could be, you know, obviously, they can be manipulated to a sensitivity, if you will, of the vehicles approaching.
Now, would this be police, fire, EMTs, the whole, or this fire?
Actually, there's two others of these sirens already in place in the town. And I haven't been able to get them to open via a horn. They're specifically to a frequency that the sirens generate from the electronic sirens. And they do, they do seem to work very well, and I don't have any indication they would work with a car horn, no.
What would be the backup if it fails?
They also have a manual override, and you can actually stop the truck, get out, and activate the gate either through a couple of different processes, either through a knox box and a key activation, or a key swipe. Those details have not been, I don't know, there's a couple of different ways we can do it, but they can be overridden. Or if they fail to work at the automatic, they can be done manually.
One more follow-up. I know it's, a donation was from Behringer of $25,000, and I thank them very much for the donation. But if this is a serious matter to put this gate in, would we have put this gate in without the $25,000? I mean, why are we waiting now to put this gate in?
You know, the idea is that this actually cuts off a significant portion of our response time, not just to Behringer Ingelheim, but to the entire community up there. All the new housing going in up on the reserve area, the housing that's going in on the Avalon Road up on Behringer Ingelheim's adjacent properties, Benson Road, all those properties up there are accessed by this. It cuts off a significant time, and I'm talking nearly 50% response time. So this is, this is something that, yeah, I think we probably would have gotten to do at some point, and hopefully not to this in the future, but this just hurries it along, because it is an important thing to do, especially with all the new construction going up on that side of town.
Again, why now? Why not two years, three years ago?
Well, it actually was driven a couple of times, long, actually, before I got into the position of chief here, it was talked about. A lot of it had to go with the fact that we have a new engine company over there. Engine 26 has the quickest access and the most rapid access to this particular road. The other companies coming from headquarters, volunteer companies, would have gone in other directions, coming to Mill Plain, Old Ridgeberry and such. So this, it made sense to couple it with the opening of a new firehouse. That new firehouse is so much closer and being able to, you know, open this road nearly, you know, simultaneously, at the same time as the firehouse opened, makes a lot more sense. So there was a, you know, a drive done, you know, very quickly to get this done as soon as possible, close to the opening of the firehouse. That's the reasoning.
Any further discussion, Mr. Rotella? Please try to keep your comments related to the donation, please. Go ahead, Mr. Rotella.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. This is sort of a health and safety. Just to assure the residents on Jenny Drive, the gate is going to remain closed unless there's an emergency, number one. But number two, I'm a little concerned about the automation portion. If I understand you correctly, the gate is going to begin to open when it senses a siren? Is that correct? No?
No, it's actually a proximity siren. You'd have to come up on, right on Jenny Road, and then activate the siren.
So someone will actually see the gate opening?
Yeah.
I don't want it to open.
It won't be opening like when the thing is down on Boulevard Drive or someplace.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then all's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Members of the common council, Mayor Marky Battin, the Federal Correctional Institute has donated six Smith &amp; Wesson Model 659 semi-automatic pistols to the Danbury Police Department. These will be outfitted with FX ammunition barrels also to be provided by the FCI. I request your permission to accept the donation for exclusive use and training with ammunition marking rounds. Weapons will be accounted for and maintained by the ESU SWAT team. Alandy Baker, Chief of Police.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion and receive the communication to accept the donation of six Smith &amp; Wesson Model 659 semi-automatic pistols to the Danbury Police Department and send a letter of thanks.
Motion made by Councilwoman Stanley and seconded by Councilman Shinise. Any discussion about the Smith &amp; Wessons? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Members of the common council, Mayor Marky Battin, permission is requested to accept the donation of $50 from Bernard and Mary Ann Mitchell Holland. The Hollands make donations annually to organizations within the City of Danbury and have selected the Danbury Police Department. We would like to use these funds in our Danbury Police Explorers program. Alandy Baker, Chief of Police.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Teicholz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive, make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation of $50 from Bernard and Mary Ann Mitchell Holland to the Danbury Police Department for the Danbury Police Explorers program and send appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Cavill. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Mayor Marky Battin, common council, the Department of Health, Housing and Welfare has received five separate and generous donations for a total of $3,950 by the donors below towards the operation of our homeless shelter. John J. Allen, Danbury Square Box Company, Connecticut Light and Power Company Giving Program, Contracting Advisors Group Limited, Albert J. Salin, Jay Roger, and Zeta Schneisel. Please replace this item on the agenda for the November common council meeting, as this donation would need to be deposited into the HLTHDON6002 account. Questions, feel free to contact me at any. Cercily Scott Leroy, Director of Health, Housing and Welfare.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the communication and move to accept the generous donations from those listed, and have this, the donations deposited into account HLTHDON60002 and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by, I think it was Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 10, please.
Mayor Battin and members of the common council, WCI Communities, Inc. has donated $6,000 towards the construction of a gated emergency accessway from Jenny Drive to Briar Ridge Road. The construction of this accessway will substantially reduce the emergency response time to that area. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the common council. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Sincerely, Antonio Endrola, PE, Director of Public Works.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to receive the communication to accept the $6,000 donation from WCI Communities, Inc., and place it towards the construction of a gated emergency accessway from Jenny Drive to Briar Ridge Road and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Shinise. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 11, please.
Mayor Battin, the Danbury Library has received a donation from Jean Smith, 157 Shelter Rock Road, Unit 59, Danbury, Connecticut, in memory of Elizabeth Sloan, in the amount of $20. Please place this item on the agenda for the November common council meeting, as this donation needs to be deposited into the Library Fund, 4651 donation. Cecily Mark P. Haskar, Library Director.
Sincerely, Mark P. Haskar, Library Director.
Pleasure, Council. And Councilman Kern.
I make a motion to accept the donation of $20 from Gene Smith and deposit it into the Library Fund, light item 4651, and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about the donation to the library? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Mayor DeBatten, Councilmembers, the Parks and Recreation Department has received the donation in the amount of $5,000 to go toward the improvements needed at the Rogers Park Baseball Field. This money will be used to purchase materials prior to making necessary repairs to the infield as well as improving overall drainage at the facility. Much of the work would be done by city personnel. Both organizations have agreed to contribute $2,500 each. Money should be transferred to account 3005-5501. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the Common Council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Nicholas Kaplanis, Director of Recreation.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of $5,000 from Danbury Youth Baseball and the Danbury Westerners. Money should be transferred to account number 305-551. Letters of appreciation should be sent for this most generous donation.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion? Then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Mayor DeBatten, members of the Common Council. The Department of Elderly Services has received the following donation for performance by the Cellmates, which is the senior center banned from the following. The Gardens, $25. Maplewood, $30. New Milford Health and Rehab, $25. Please accept these donations and transfer the above $80 into line item 5002-5311 Professional Services. In addition, we have received two donations of cash in the memory of Vincent Jimmy C. Rao. Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Haberman donated $10 and Mr. Robert Kullard donated $100. The Rao family has no specific instruction for how they would like this money put to use, and they have left it up to the discretion of this writer to put it toward any senior center need. Therefore, please accept these donations and transfer the $110 to line item 5002-5311 Professional Services. Thank you respectfully, Susan Ann Tonadio, Director of Elderly Services.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the donation of $80 and place that into line item 5002-5311, as well as the money that was donated, the $110 that was donated in memory of Vincent Rao, and have that also deposited into line item 5002-5311 and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Seaberry, I believe. Any discussion relating to this donation? Obviously, we're very thankful to the Rao family. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 14, please.
Honorable Mark DeBatten, via Common Council. Because the sewer fund is an enterprise fund, any funds that are appropriated and unspent at the end of the fiscal year for capital projects and equipment purchases which are carried over into the next fiscal year, plus any purchase orders issued prior to June 30th but not completed, must be re-appropriated to the current fiscal year. The Common Council must take action to approve the reappropriation of those monies so that the projects can be completed and equipment accepted. Based on a preliminary financial statement that will be issued to our auditors, I hereby certify the availability of $55,608 be appropriated to the sewer fund accounts as per the attached listing. Please place this item on the agenda for the Common Council's November meeting. Please feel free to contact me should you require any additional information. Thank you. Attached, day-to-day Superintendent of Public Utilities.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Sadi?
Your Honor, I would like to receive the communication and reappropriate the fund as indicated by the Director of Finance.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Cavo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor? Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Idirola or whoever answers this question, and to the Director of Finance, two questions. One, is this the total amount that's currently in the fund and we're rolling it over? Or is there any excess funds that are being transferred elsewhere? And then, second question is, could you just very briefly describe the SCADA system upgrade? What that is?
Whoever, start with Mr. Saint-Hilaire and then Mr. Idirola, you'll answer the, the, right, the infrastructure piece. The top, Saint-Hilaire.
This is the available budget that was left over from last year and we're just rolling it over. What's, yes, what's remaining?
Mr. Idirola? Or Mr. Day?
Okay, Mr. Day? Yeah, the SCADA system stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. So what that is, that's, that's the equipment that we use to operate and monitor the wastewater treatment plant. Now, the original, the last SCADA system was put in in 1993 when the plant was upgraded. So what it consists of is basically three components. You have a central control room with the main computer system. And then you have your remote terminal units, your processing units, which are attached to our pumps and our processes that need to be monitored. And then you have your communication infrastructure, which is either hardwired or wireless, which, which we can, you know, through our computers, we can say we want to turn these pumps on or off. We can measure, you know, the dissolved oxygen in the liquid at the time. So it's, it's how we efficiently operate the plant. And quite frankly, in 1993, it was state-of-the-art. Now it's a dinosaur that we can't get replacement parts for. So back in the '06, '07, the, the capital project was $400,000. We do have a contractor onboard now and we've spent, so we have a purchase order for, I believe, you know, the $345,000. That remaining $55,000, we do have plans for additional upgrades needed at the plant as well as pump stations which, which come to the plant.
I may follow up, Your Honor?
Absolutely.
With regard to monitoring, is that done onsite or is there some off-site central location or is there multiple points where the data can be monitored in order to react to occurrences at the facility?
It is onsite, but, but you are able, we have operators that, that are able to plug into their, you know, computers at home and, and as we do with our water treatment plants and, and with the right, you know, passwords, you can, you can monitor the system and make changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
And Mr. Day, I just want to add, we're proud that the legislature finally got the clean water fund money moving. Part of our denitrification plan will include enhanced monitoring as well, particularly as it relates to odor control, which has been certainly a concern for both Mr. Sadi and I, and Mr. Esposito on that side of the city. So we look forward to working with you on that project. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Item 15 through 17 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 18, please.
Joseph Cave, President, Common Council. Dear Mr. Cavo, enclosed herewith, please find application for extension of the sewer and water lines for property located at 12 Clappord Ridge Road. Approval to extend the water and sewer lines was previously granted. However, the approval will terminate in November 2007. We are hereby requesting an extension of said approval. Thank you for your consideration. Yours truly, Paul Weber.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavo?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and approve a time extension for the installation of water and sewer lines at 12 Clappord Ridge Road.
This is made and seconded by Mr. Negashat. Any discussion about the sewer extension? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Items 19 through 22 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 23, please.
Mayor Mark DeBatten, member of the Common Council. Dear Mayor DeBatten, attached for your consideration is a resolution and proposal from the State of Connecticut Department of Health to have a mobile field hospital located here in Danbury. There is no cost for this all-weather field hospital to be kept here in Danbury, and this will enhance our operational response in the event of emergencies. Sincerely, Paul DeEstefan, Director of Emergency Nanosys.
It's a pleasure, Councilman Cavo.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and approve the resolution and the proposal from the State of Connecticut Department of Health to have a mobile hospital here, field hospital located here in Danbury.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Mr. Biscanti?
Hey, Your Honor. Just very quickly to Mr. Estefan, where will this be stored and how will it be used? The, I don't know, it'll be stored at the airport in a hangar when we receive it, which will probably be in the spring of next year. And as far as response goes, Chief Harold and I will be going to look at the mobile field hospital in other communities to see how they handle it, how easy it is or not easy to put it up, and how many people are going to be required. I will say that I've talked to the health directors in the region, here in the Heffco area, asking for their support for assistance in having individuals trained in their community to set it up in the event it's needed outside the confines of the city of Danbury. This is a regional asset, basically.
May, Your Honor, one quick follow-up. Is this part of Homeland, anything to do with Homeland Security or just separate from it?
I'm sure that somewhere along the line, it would be the state with the mobile field hospitals. We really and truly need something on this side of the state because if, in the event Danbury Hospital, we can't access it, we have to have a staging area. And let me say that with all the information you have in your package, this is going to really help us in the event we have to set it up and we have to use it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Estefan, Mr. Sadi?
I may, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Estefan. Sorry, Paul. Mr. Estefan, with regard to who would authorize use of this, setting up either for training purposes or for an emergency response if necessary, as well as the, basically the jurisdiction over it, who is liable, who really owns it once its place is, is still with the state and we simply would staff it? Just want to get a better sense of that structure.
The item will be owned solely by the State of Connecticut Department of Health. As we received other equipment here in the community on a regional asset level, it has State of Connecticut plates on it. The State of Connecticut will, from my understanding, if we use any of the items in there that need to be replaced, we will go to them for the replacement items. I will not be coming back, I hope, to the council or the mayor or the finance director asking for assistance in that category. As far as activation, the fire chief and I will work that out with the consent of the mayor. We'll make the mayor, we'll inform him what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. And then we will bring it back to the state and work with them as well on the response of this particular item. In order, in order to comment on that, Councilman, I have to go and literally look at this type of an operation, just to see how many people. My consensus is about four or five people will be needed to set it up. That's why I went to the Heffco Health Directors. We had a meeting at the airport the last couple of months seeking their assistance and it was very positive feedback from them. And they are setting up their teams in their communities so that we're not burdened with setting it up, taking it down, bringing it back, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Estefan. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Sadi? Mr. Rotella?
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the chair to Director Estefan. Paul, a couple of quick questions. In general, with a proficient crew, how long would it take to set up? How long will the unit last? And is there any routine or continuing maintenance involved on some of the mechanical systems to keep it in a state of readiness?
The, I, I must say that in the anthrax issue that we've had recently here in our community, the strike team from the U.S. Army brought a miniature setup and it took them less than 10 minutes to set it up. It's an air bottle that attaches to the side of this facility. They turn on the air and it's pressurized, the, the hospital sets it up. And you just walk inside and sit down, you put chairs, tables, personnel in there and utilize it.
How long do you think it'll last in storage?
I have no idea on the life expectancy of the product. I'm sure that the State of Connecticut has covered that in their bid documents, but I, I really don't know.
Are we required to do any routine maintenance on the mechanical systems?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Mr. Kern?
Mayor, maybe you can answer this. Where is this going to put us contractually? I mean, who's going to run this? Is this going to be like our haz-?
Second, Mr. Kern. Was that that? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Kern.
Is this going to be like the hazmat team where are the fire personnel operated or is there going to be an outside personnel that are going to operate? And then are you going to get in trouble with the union? Or do you have any idea? Anybody?
It's going to act, it's going to be used primarily by outside agencies. We're prepositioning the hospital here in the event of some kind of catastrophic emergency, either in Western Connecticut or the state. At that point, it would be activated, it would be used. We anticipate the staffing would be done by the State of Connecticut and the Department of Homeland Security. This is not really a fire department asset. We can't just activate it because we think we need a mobile field hospital unless there, you know, the incident is so catastrophic that it's going to require first responders from the whole region, then the state may assist us in activating the field hospital. I mean, hopefully, we'll never have to use it. But it's not really an asset that we would set up with, with our own individual department.
Any further discussion about the mobile field hospital? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 24, if you could just read the title and then stop. Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, Councilman Cavo?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to refer item number 24 to an ad hoc committee with the Director of Public Works, the City Engineer, and the Corporation Counsel's Office.
The ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Trimbetta, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Biscanti. Sorry, Fred. Item 25, I believe, was on consent, right? 26 was on consent. Also, let me just say, item 24, also, did we mention Director of Public Works, Corporation Counsel? Okay. Item 27 was consent. Mr. President, Department reports.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports as all members have copies and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Negashat. Any discussion on the department reports? Seeing no discussion, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Before we break, ladies and gentlemen, I just have a couple announcements. Obviously, we're somewhat bittersweet for some of the members who did not get reelected. We certainly want to thank them for their service over the many, many years to our city. We thank them for being a volunteer servant. And there's a lot to be said for that. And sometimes, everybody on both sides of the aisle comes to me and says, why do I do this? And the fact is, you do it because you love your community and you want what's best for our city and for the residents who live here. And although sometimes we may differ on what is best, the fact of the matter is I've never questioned and nobody in here has ever questioned anybody else's motives. Everybody truly wants the right things for Danbury. And so we salute those individuals that won't be working with us starting next month. That would include Councilwoman Taverzak, Councilwoman Saracino, Councilwoman Bassow. I think, am I missing anybody else? I think I've covered everybody. And so we thank them and recognize them for the service, and I think it would be right and appropriate to give them a round of applause for their hard work.[1713.01][1713.01][applause] Couple of other housekeeping things.
Couple of other housekeeping things. I'll be reassigning some of the outstanding committees at the December meeting. People have asked me about if somebody was assigned to a committee, does that kill the committee? No, we'll just plug in new members into those spots. I'll have a list for you at the December meeting. We'll also have an organizational meeting on the Monday before the first council meeting December. That's where we elect the council president, adopt our rules, and also set our schedule for the meetings for the next two years. I've had requests from a couple of the, both caucuses, to look carefully at the schedule this next two years, to make sure that we don't put meetings in sort of strange places, right after Labor Day and things like that. So I assure you, I'll review that carefully with the City Clerk's staff to make sure that we have good dates picked out, try to run them by everybody so we're all on the same page as to when we're going to be meeting over the next two years. We have tentatively scheduled a swearing-in ceremony. I'd certainly like to invite the public who's watching tonight for December the 2nd, probably in the late afternoon. And the first business day is December 3rd at noon. That's when you officially take office again. We will get information out to you as it relates to that. We have some thoughts about doing that. I think there's, is there an actual handout that's being given out? There'll be handout with contact information, and also reservations. We'd like to get those. We'll do some light refreshments after the actual swearing-in, but we encourage your family, friends, neighbors to come. And I think it's an important day. It's always an important day for the city when we swear in a new council, a new mayor, and elected officers. In addition to that, I also want to just congratulate all of the people that are on the dais here tonight. I have to tell you, in terms of the race for council, I haven't seen such a clean race and hard-fought race in many, many years. Each of you worked very hard. You ran on what you believed and perceived to be was best for this community. It was completely positive, and I want to compliment members on both sides of the aisle for just working hard and trying to do the best you can, and recognizing that the next day, we all got to wake up together, and we still got to live next door to each other, and have our kids go to school together, and see each other, and make sure that we, you know, we care about one another. So congratulations to everybody in this room. Congratulations to all the winners, and congratulations to everybody that put their name in the ring that didn't make it. They certainly deserve credit for working towards a better Danbury. With that thought in mind, I'm going to extend to all committees, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Rotella, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All favor, German, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has it. We are adjourned.